Our business manager. In this meeting we'll identify revenues, identify expenditures, and present the summary of revenues and expenditures in the Wisconsin Uniform Financial Reporting Requirement format, which is required by state statutes. The budget hearing is an opportunity for the electors to provide comment on the proposed budget. At this time, I will turn it over to administration, who will provide an overview of the budget. Doug, if you would. So in the special education and our fourteen percent or up to our ninety-six percent of our total expenditures are on educational and support programs. We have debt service, community service, two others, but they're minimal in our situation. We also keep track of things. It's a very unscientific description, but objects are the things for which we spend money. You can see with salaries about forty-eight percent benefits, twenty percent. The majority of the dollars that are showing in the transfer section of the pie up there are the transfers from the general fund and the special education fund. Add those three together, that's like eighty percent of the budget by the time you throw in the purchase of services that we have. That pretty well takes care of all of the things that we spend district money on. In the meeting booklet, there was a four-page document entitled Budget Adoption. This is put together at the direction of the DPI and it's the way in which we are presented the budget over which we adopt the budget. Shows the audited from two thousand eleven twelve, the unaudited from the past year. Our audit has been completed and we have not gotten the final report back yet, probably at least another month before that happens. And then the last column, and I didn't put all this on transparency or on PowerPoint. What I did put on was a summary of various funds that we're using this year. You can see the general fund and the special education fund make up the vast majority of our expenses. A little calculation at the bottom designed to make sure that districts don't double count their expenditures. For example, that two point nine million in inter-fund transfer is reflected as both an expenditure in both the general fund and in the special education fund. So we have to back that out, gives us total net expenditures, then twenty-seven point eight million dollars for this year. In your package, there was also a page ten. I think we have the same page number. Community service fund. Years ago, the legislature included the cost of community service programs in revenue limits. When Scott McCallum had his brief tenure in the governor's office, he removed community service tax levy from the revenue limits. And it's been that way up until this year, when legislation decided to put community service fund levy back under the revenue limits. So we had informed the board a few weeks ago that we had to make a minor change because in order to raise the community services fund levy, and I think originally we were looking at something of seven hundred and fifty dollars, we would have had to have a revenue cap referendum in order for community spending. So they're allowing districts to still create and maintain community service funds, but the only way that you can exceed the levy for community services that you had in the year of twelve thirteen, you're going to go to a revenue cap referendum. We're also required to post a notice on the district webpage and to include some information in the booklet that's available here. And we have ten days after tonight's meeting to fill out a form for the DPI that tells how we handle this situation. I'm not required to read it, but it's in the book, but basically, I wrote a little blurb that said what we use, community service fund tax levy for. And it's basically been, we publish the district newsletter, we put on the senior citizen dinner, and we pay somebody who supervises the weight room. Those things are all compatible and guidelines established for community service funds. So it's a lot of talking about the smallest item on the whole budget, but it's something that we need to share, that we have to be aware of in the future. I'd like to have some discussion about whether we're going to continue to have community services fund. I'll actually pause at this point and ask if anybody has any questions about the budget information, although I'd like to move on to the discussion of the tax budget. Okay, hearing none. This chart shows, first of all, you can see across the top, the only funds that we have a tax levy in are the general fund, debt service, and community services fund. Grand total expenditures for those three funds is point five point three million dollars. Non-tax revenue, which is state aid, federal aid, student aid, things like that, total just under nine point five million dollars. So that would require a levy of fifteen million eight hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars, which is a two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollar increase over last year. The mill rate will change from ten dollars and two cents last year to ten dollars and twenty-one cents this year, which is an increase of maybe ten cents. I'd like to point out that this levy is approximately six, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars less than the district would have allowed the levy under the revenue formula. This is the second year in a row that the proposed levy has been less than allowed. And so editorializing, we didn't say, "Board's making every effort to deliver quality educational services, maintaining fiscal control of the district." They had the ability over this year and last year to levy almost a million and a half dollars that they did not feel the need to do. So we've been keeping close eye on the first one. The actual tax levy and mill rate can't be calculated till about the middle of October, when you'll get the newest state aid projection from the DPI. And the Department of Revenue will provide us with an equalized value of the taxes and properties in the district. I did this last year, but it was permanent, including the audience. If you want a quick way to figure this, what your taxes would be, subject of course to the information coming from the state, what's assumed that property value is going to be exactly the same as it was last year? And the tax levy is going to be what's being proposed tonight. Divide fifteen point eight million by one point five billion, equalize value, and your mill rate is ten dollars and twenty-one cents. Or divide the value of your property by a thousand and multiply that by the mill rate. That's showing an example, that two hundred thousand dollar property, divided by one thousand of the two hundred times the mill rate, the taxes on your property would be two thousand and forty-two dollars. I had also included in the booklet, something that we've been using for a number of years, we've compared our tax levy information for the last six years with what's been proposed for this year. I'd like to note that when the DPI gave us our preliminary revenue limit, it was sixteen million two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which would have been a four point six percent increase in the mill rate. The board directed the administration to come back with something closer to two percent. And finally, using tax levy, seeing that we got the fifteen point eight million, which is a one point eight eight percent of using the levy. And that comes on a yield of a zero percent decrease for last year. Holding down the tax increase to six hundred and two percent for this year. Although I have the question.
Okay. Thanks Doug. At this time, I'll ask for any questions. Discussion first from community members that might be in the audience about the budget. If you'd like to step up and speak your name and address to the record. If you're seeing none, any questions for Doug from board members? Okay. In that case, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the budget as presented. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, by voice vote, would everybody please say yea or nay on the budget? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
So, Gary, six one. At this time, we're going to elect a chairperson for the annual meeting. Do I have by voice any nominations as chairperson of the annual meeting? This also can be a person from the, from the audience, one of our electors that can be. Do I have a nomination for a chairperson of the meeting?
I'm going to nominate T.J. Anderson for chairperson.
We're jumping the gun a little bit. We're, we're so efficient that our agenda says that we cannot start the annual meeting until seven p.m.
Oh.
So that's the price of efficiency. So.
I have, that's a published notice, says seven, six thirty for the budget meeting, seven p.m. for the annual, the one that was in the newspaper.
You cannot start, and we'll recess until seven o'clock?
Well, can we, can we not recess? Can we just go back? That's possible.
Can we watch?
Can we go back and ask Doug some questions?
About the budget?
Sure.
Now, we've already boarded on it.
Right, I agree. And that's why I just wanted to get some clarification. I'm okay with the budget being passed away, Doug. My, my real question is, we got our third Friday count. We get that, how did the third Friday work?
I didn't actually get that information yet, because you have to wait till the week after the third Friday. That's, that's the answer I can give, and I don't, I don't have the numbers.
All right, so we don't have the third Friday count. Property values that we use in your example, fifteen million, fifteen?
One point five billion.
How, how is, have you heard from municipalities, what they feel that their assessments are going to come in at?
I did look on the Department of Revenue page, actually a couple of months ago, and one, now, I, sorry, I don't remember when, I think I talked about it at a finance committee meeting, one of the three municipalities had gone up, the other two had actually gone down a little bit.
So that fifteen, one point five billion, is that reflective of last year, or what you mean this year?
That, that was the actual for last year.
Okay.
And unfortunately, we don't get the, even with this late annual meeting date, we don't get the new information until mid October.
And that was going to be my question, because it'll tie into the, the end. This meeting used to be held at the end of January, at the end of July. And this board has always, the last couple of years, has actually pushed it all the way into September at the last possible date. Am I correct? Right, Gary, with the possibly, the last possible date?
No, I think it can be a bit later, but I'll go check.
Okay. The reason we push it back to this late is for the fact that we try to get as many true accurate numbers in as in the past, you'd always do a budget, say, in July, it would be, pardon my pardon, called a crapshoot, as to what our real revenue numbers were going to be. But we've been able to come very close. And that would be my question here, is what, how close are we, or have we been in the last couple of years, to our actual revenue numbers to what they are?
You mean the number that we went to the annual meeting with?
Yes.
The DPI now provides a July first revenue cap aid estimate, and they, they were pretty close last year. A lot of that stuff is based on prior year's expenditures. So they have that information to use to be able to make the projections. And I would, I'm going to go out on a limb a little bit and say, I think that in terms of the state aid and revenue limit numbers that they've given us, they'll be pretty close when we get them in October.
Okay. I'm hugging the conversation that just comes in. I just have a lot of questions here.
I, sorry, I, you know, I-
No, no, you're fine. Seriously, Doug. No, seriously, you are, you actually are an amazing business manager, and I commend you, give you a lot of credit for that, you really are. Mr. Rush, our attorney, has just pointed a date to me, looking at our annual meeting on or before October thirty-first. Now, we always move it to the end of September. And you cite a statute that shows that we can do that? We always move it to the end of September, but can we be October?
Yes.
So we can move it to October. But moving it to October, does that benefit you as administration or the district? Or is this a better time? Because it's going to tie into the annual meeting, we set the next meeting, next year's annual meeting.
Well, we still have the requirement to post a notice, notices of the annual meeting and budget hearing, a couple of weeks ahead of time for that meeting. So we would have to have something to publish still before we would get the information from the DPI. So, I mean, so the numbers that we're going to get from the DPI in July are going to be the numbers that we have to use in the budget projection, that we're required to publish. Gary, you're wheels, attorney. Also, I'm concerned about if the annual meeting should vote down the tax levy. The board's only got until the first of November to correct that if they deem it necessary. And then it's what, the sixth or tenth this year, which is goofy, because I believe that's a Sunday, tenth of November, isn't it? I don't, in any rate. So, you know, it, I'm not sure that it would help that much, because I don't know how much more time we would gain by going, say, a September twenty-third or, you know, last week in September to sometime in October.
There was no more benefit to pushing it on?
I don't think so. I might want to talk that over with, you know, folks at the DPI or with Gary and-
But from, I guess my question is more directed strictly to administration, is, does it help you or hurt you if we keep it around the same time? Do you find this a comfortable timeframe to be able to get? Because there's so much that goes into this, this fifteen or twenty-minute presentation you made, there's actually thousands of man-hours to get us to that point. I mean, it wasn't just, we'll throw it into a spreadsheet. I mean, it went all the way down to every level. And so, I mean, that's really my question, is are you comfortable, is it okay with this timeframe for everything that you would need or require?
I'm comfortable with it. I mean, I've, I've been working with this timeframe long before I came to work in Whitmore. Once they changed it so that it didn't have to be the last Monday in July, the board I worked for tried to move it as late as they possibly could. So I'm comfortable with it.
You couldn't stretch that out any time?
I mean, I've got, I've got a dozen more questions.
I have a question.
Yeah, see, there we go.
I should have had more, I should have had more PowerPoint.
In our article, Doug, in the now, a couple of weeks past, you talk about state aid and it being down approximately a thousand dollars, a hundred thousand this year. And you say that you're expecting the following year to lose close to a million, being next year.
Right. There are three, the three main factors that determine what our state equalization aid is going to be, is our membership and the kids that we have, the total equalized valuation of the district, and our net cost of operation from the previous year. It all goes all into a blender, so to speak, and, and it spits out what our state aid is going, the equalization aid is going to be. Prior to this year, we had been declining at the rate of about fifteen percent a year, which is actually the maximum that's set by statute right now. You can't fall below eighty-five percent of what you got the year before. Last year, and that is, I should say, eleven twelve, we did that defeasance of our debt. That meant that in the twelve thirteen school year, we didn't have debt service payments to make. Therefore, our net cost of operation declined. Also, unfortunately, our property values fell from, I don't have it in there, but anyway, to that one point five billion. Those were two factors that, while they're negative in some respects, what they did do was shift us into a position of aid formula where we had a much smaller loss. Next year, if something doesn't happen with the aid formula, I'm projecting that we're going to be back into the area of a ten to fifteen percent drop in our aid, which I estimated, I think, from the reporter, at approximately a million dollars. You know, that number may change when we find out what our actual is going to be this year, but that's the difference between a hundred thousand one year and a million next year.
So along with some very needed capital improvements that we're going to have to do, we're looking at quite a bit of money that we don't have.
Well, to some extent, you're right. Some of the, over four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, for example, that we are under levying this year, we'll be able to recover some of that next year, and then, you know-
But we'll have to increase the taxes to get that money.
Oh, yes. You know, the only place the money is going to come from is not going to be from the state or federal government, unless, I mean, a few years ago, you may recall, we got that three quarters of a million dollars from the federal jobs fund, for example. But after two years, that was all gone. And-
But do we not have, we have talked on a million four, saying the capital improvements project fund right now?
Yes, we do.
So the idea that the state levy would be decreasing, it then becomes, you know, it's the actual school board to determine where the priorities lie as to what they want to fulfill. And I think that was the intent of the whole shift in government, let's put it back down to local level, to determine what each school board or each school district wanted, how they wanted to spend their money. The state basically said across the board, here's what we have. And then it truly becomes a local control issue as to how you want to raise money or leave money or not raise money. It's, it's the decision of the school board versus in the past, as an example, for the last couple of years, we have, we have taxed under the max for a levy. Because the board has been positioned financially and politically to say, we don't need to tax to the max. And Mr. Perd makes a point that we have much-needed improvements that are required, that again is a decision that's made, recommendation from administration to the board, and the board makes the final decision if we want to spend that money, or how we want to spend any money within a district. So the state is just saying, here's what the money that we have. If you as a board choose, you can go to your electorate and increase your tax levy. So, and I think that's across the board that the state has been saying that, because the pot itself, I don't, I don't know if it's growing or not growing, but it's- the pot itself, I don't know if it's growing or not growing, but it's, they've at least determined what the pot will be. Now, if we didn't do the defeasance a couple of years ago, um, we'd be sitting with a much larger fund balance right now, but we'd also have a much higher expenditure level. So, when we go back to a couple of years when we did the defeasance, we looked at it economically that the amount of money that we saved by doing the defeasance was extremely beneficial to our school district, correct?
I would say it's a pretty desirable position to be in. I mean, we've got a little bit of debt service there, but basically, we're debt-free, and that's a pretty good position for any organization to be in.
Thank you. All right. Um, had a good conversation, and it used up the time we're looking for. So, we've accomplished what we wanted to accomplish.
We're now a little after seven, so now we're a little behind time. But anyways, um, as I mentioned about 12 and a half minutes ago, there was a point in the meeting where we're gonna ask for the election of a chairperson to chair the annual meeting. Um, so by voice, any nominations as to the chairperson for the annual meeting?
So, I'd like to nominate T.J. Anderson as chairperson.
Okay. And do I have a second?
I have a second there.
Okay. Any other nominations for chairperson? Hearing none, um, we can vote on this by voice. All in favor of having T.J. Anderson chair the annual meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Um, I don't have a gavel to turn over to you, but you can have my water.
Oh, my, my own water, it's a shocker, I can breathe my water. Um, so, then, right here. All right. Um, thank you very much. Right now, we're gonna be reading an approval of 2012 annual board meeting minutes. Ms. Richter?
Uh, actually, we do have the option that in lieu of reading them verbatim, we have them published in the packet. So, I would then ask that we could have a motion to accept the minutes as typed with the following adjustment. The members present for last year's annual meeting should reflect the attendance of Mrs. Anderson's attendance.
Do I have a motion to accept last year's minutes with the addition of, Ms. Richter, this side?
Some of.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Burnett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Richter. Oh, this is a very good point, and I'm sorry. In the years past, we don't have to do it, but in the years past, board members, we are no longer board members. I meant to stress this. Um, if anybody in the audience knew ever, at this moment, there is no more school board. Uh, this is an annual meeting, and we can, in the past, we've all gotten up and sat in those seats back in the audience. So, and I apologize, is there any questions or comments from the people that are here? No? Okay, so I will ask again for clarification. We have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Let's do one more. All in favor of the motion that was presented? Yea, your name? Yea?
Aye.
Nays? No, none of us. Thank you. Treasurer's report, that would be me.
Um, I'm sorry, Mr. Anderson, for interrupting, but we have the actual clerk's report to submit prior to the treasurer's report.
Oh, I am so sorry. I heard your name. Go ahead, Steph.
Thank you. Uh, the clerk's report is the following. Board of Education held, election was held on Tuesday, April 2nd of 2013. The results for the reelection of one board member and the election of a new board member. Stephanie Richter, myself incumbent, received 1,755 votes, and Ms. Luanne Byrd, a new board member, received 1,266 votes. The clerk's report, which is also included in the annual meeting booklet, represents unhaunted information related to our various funds for our last fiscal year ending on June 30th of 2013. I request that the clerk's report as presented in the annual meeting booklet on page 18 be accepted.
Thank you, Ms. Richter. Um, with that, do I have a motion to accept the clerk's report? Motion to accept the clerk's report as submitted? If you have a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion? With that, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor of accepting the clerk's report as presented, by saying aye?
Aye.
And anybody who knows? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you, Stephanie. I'm sorry about that. Treasurer's report, that would be me. Again, I will do the same thing as Stephanie did. The treasurer's report is in the annual meeting packet. Um, I will only add that this district has positioned itself incredibly well over the last several years. Um, it tended help. Um, a 1.8% increase is something that does not get discussed and passed lightly. Um, there has been plenty of discussions. Uh, but financially, we're in a great position. Um, so with that, I will ask that the treasurer's report be presented and accepted as presented. Do I have a motion to accept a treasurer's report?
Some of.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Richter. All in favor, are there any discussion? Saying none. All in favor of accepting the treasurer's report as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. President's report, Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Um, I have a few comments. The Whittles School Board approved and adopted five major goal categories for the 2012-15 academic year. They were as follows: increased academic rigor and college career readiness, communication, fiscal responsibility, financial control discipline, provide mobile technology in classrooms to support academic achievement, and a school climate survey. Just wanna make a few brief comments in each of these. Uh, just last week, the Department of Public Instruction released the preliminary report cards for public schools and school districts. There are 424 public school districts and 2,111 schools within the state of Wisconsin. Districts and schools were evaluated on four priority areas: student achievement, student growth, holes and gaps, and post-secondary readiness. These mathematical evaluations then fell into one of five rating categories: significantly exceeds expectations, exceeds expectations, meets expectations, meets a few expectations, or fails to meet expectations entirely. The board and administration is proud to report that the Whittles School District fell into the exceeds expectation rating category, one of 133 districts within the state to achieve this rating. The Whittles School District actually scored higher than Greendale and Nicolay in the absolute score number. The community should be proud of this accomplishment as well. I encourage parents to visit the Department of Public Instruction website for more detailed information. On the communication front, the district developed and sent a school survey in May of this year to seek input from community members on various categories of the effectiveness of the school district as a whole. There were a total of 1,045 responses to the survey. I'll comment on the results in just a moment. Communication is an area the district will focus on in 2013-14, and certainly the years following. It was apparent this past year that the district needed to proactively communicate issues and incidences, even in those situations where all the facts have not been identified. As stewards of our taxpayers' money, it is imperative we exercise prudent fiscal responsibility while still providing a high-quality education in order to protect home values. This balancing act can be challenging at times. Over the last two years, we have decreased the tax levy by an average of 2.9%. The proposed 1.88% increase for 2013-14 will not even cover the preliminary increase in the district compensation and benefits budget increase. The board takes fiscal responsibility very seriously. With potential large capital improvements needed at the high school and at Hills Corners Elementary in the near future, we should not deplete fund balances to finance operating expenses. This is a formula for long-term disaster. Technology is ever-changing and involving the field of education. The district has made the commitment to ensure our students are equipped with the necessary tools to meet this changing environment. This does not mean we are always gonna be state-of-the-art, but it does mean we will provide them the technology needed to compete with all other students within the state of Wisconsin. The results of the school climate survey would indicate the district is on the right track in many areas, but there is still quite a bit of work to be done. Change in education is occurring at such a fast pace that we need to continually inform the stakeholders in the district on what those changes are and their potential effect not only on the community and parents, but more importantly, on the students. We encourage your constructive input and feedback. Please take the time to thank the teachers and staff for their commitment and dedication to this district. After all, they are our most important asset. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Commend your report. All right, thank you. We'll move on to your, oh, superintendent's report.
Dr. Holtz. Thank you. Um, last year, I reported that our focus was gonna be to raise the bar and increase academic achievement, and I'm happy to report that we have been successful in doing both. The faculty, staff, and school board continue to be amazing when it comes to meeting the needs of the children in our community. Our school board made a commitment several years ago to provide planned and systematic professional development for our teachers, and this has resulted in some higher academic achievement, which can be attributed to that systematic professional development. We have been blessed with an awesome teaching staff who not only met expectations for our students, but they exceeded expectations. Because of their commitment to our students, uh, we've achieved some degree of academic success. As a result, a first-ever school district report card came out, where the Whittles School District is the highest-scoring district of the Southwest suburban Milwaukee districts. And that's quite an achievement for any school district. Matter of fact, I believe there's only nine school districts in the entire state that reach the next level up, which will be our goal in coming years. We are certainly living in an era of unprecedented change. We have NAEP, the Common Core, educator effectiveness, open enrollment, voucher schools, charter schools, school report cards, one technology. Change is gonna be an everyday occurrence. Change will either happen with you, it will happen because of you, or change will happen to you. We have the choice to provide leadership through all these changes for our students and our community. We have children that are counting on us to lead them through the changes in their new world while learning to embrace the change and use it to create a better future for all of us. As a district, we will continue our commitment to our children, our staff, and our taxpayers. We will provide a quality educational environment, and we will operate as fiscally efficient as possible. As your district administrator, I remain committed to providing a quality education for our children while continuing to be accountable to each and every person in our community.
Thank you, Dr. Holtz. At this point, we'll have a motion to set the time of next year's annual meeting. Um, I will ask for a motion to set the time of next year's budget hearing. State statute requires the annual meeting held on the 4th Monday of July, which is July 28th, 2014, to begin at 8:00 PM. Is the board or administration interested in changing the time to immediately follow the 6:30 board hearing and/or change the date to September after the audit, the 4th Friday of September, September 22nd, 2014? Administration?
Um, so you're asking if there's any interest in moving it later than the September date?
No, later than the July date.
Oh.
Doug?
Oh, no, sir. That's, you know-
You're-
......
No, sir.
I'm asking if you're interested in moving it to approximately the same timeframe we're in now.
Oh, I would say that I'm comfortable with that, I would, with that, guys, too.
Right, to the discussion we had earlier. So, I will ask for a motion, um, to set the annual meeting for 2014 to be September 22nd. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to move the annual meeting to September 22nd, 2014.
Do you have the time? Yes.
6:30 PM? Oh, uh, annual meeting is 7:00 PM.
I have a motion on the floor to set the annual meeting to September 22nd, 2014, at 7:00 PM. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Ms. Richter? All right. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. If you vote on setting the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None. Motion. Meeting is set for September 22nd, 2014, 7:00 PM. I will ask for a motion to approve the levying of school taxes. Do I need to read this? Motion will be as follows: motion to levy a school tax for the ensuing year. Moves that there will be, and there is hereby levied upon the taxable property of the Whittles School District, Village of Hills Corners, City of Greenfield, Franklin, Milwaukee County, Wisconsin, a tax in the amount of $15,823,727 for the general fund, and $14,749 for the community service fund, to be levied and collected for the school year 2013-2014, with the understanding that the final levy will be adjusted by November 1st, 2013, by the Whittles School Board, based on the actual data received on resident enrollment, equalization property values, and certified aid. I must note that the levies are subject to change resulting the 3rd Friday of September people count for final termination of state aids or the final property valuations. With that, do I have a motion?
I will make a motion to assess the tax levy. There will be, and there is hereby levied upon the taxable property of the Whittles School District, Village of Hills Corners, Cities of Greenfield and Franklin, Milwaukee County, Wisconsin, a tax in the amount of $15,765,237 for the general fund, $55,000 for the debt service fund, and $14,749 for the community service fund, with a total of $15,834,986, to be levied and collected for the school year 2013-14, with the understanding that the final levy will be adjusted by November 1st, 2013, by the Whittles School Board, based on actual data received on resident enrollment, equalized property values, and certified aid.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Does any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right, you? Two nays. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Motion to set the school board salaries and compensation for expenses. Um, the motion, I would need a motion to set the school board members' salaries and compensation for expenses. Currently, the salary for school board president is 3,400, and each other member is 3,200. Do I have any motions? Hearing none. I will make a motion that would keep the current salaries equivalent to last year's: 3,400 for the president, 3,200 for the lead, all of the members. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Second. Any discussion?
Do we know where our salaries fall in with other communities?
Historically speaking, we've always fit right in the middle.
With the bottom. Greenfield is 4,200.
Right.
Franklin over here is higher.
But it's all based on, if you look at it historically, it's right in, we're right in the middle. It's always been. I will say that it has been this amount for the last several years. Any other further discussion regarding compensation for school board members? Hearing none. I will take a vote on the compensation of board president, 3,400, and other members, 3,200. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None. Motion passes unanimously. With that, our responsibility is complete for our annual meeting. I will ask for a motion to adjourn from the annual meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn from the annual meeting.
Thank you, because I didn't wanna do it myself. All in favor, say aye. All right. I need, I'm sorry, I need a second.
I would second that.
Thank you, Eileen, it's my turn, Gary. We have counsel for the reason. Um, all right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Nay. Thank you. The motion carried, and the annual meeting is over. With that, Mr. Shaw, I turn the gavel back over to you, and we go into our regular school board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, for adjarring the annual meeting. Much appreciated. I'd like to call the meeting to order, verify a meeting notice, and adopt the agenda. Since we've already had the pledge of flag, we don't need to repeat that. So, first item on the agenda is comments from the audience regarding items for future consideration. Anybody from the audience has, would like to make a comment or a question? Please step up the microphone, state your name and address. Seeing none, we'll move to the item number three, the consent agenda. Consent agenda, approval of staff resignation, approval of new staff hires, approval of August 26, 2013, and September 9, 2013, school board meeting minutes, and approval of September vouchers and vouchers payable. For anybody on the board like to pull an item from the consent agenda. Hearing none, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. So move. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? So carried. Next item on the agenda is comments from the school board regarding agenda items for future consideration. I apologize, I do not have the same items that we had previously. That's my fault. I apologize. I can review those with you, again, if you'd like, but I do have most of those. Any new ones that you would like to tee up for future consideration to ensure I get them on a future agenda? Anyone?
Have we had a, we haven't really had a discussion on the community survey, have we?
I've discussed it.
I mean, we had a little presentation, but then we really haven't. After we got all the information, we haven't really talked about the survey and what are we going to do about it?
I think that's a good thought. I think it's a very good item to have for board workshop next Monday. The only things we did talk about were looking at gap analysis. So I think I will make sure that's part of the discussion.
In conjunction with the goals.
Yes.
That's true.
And then looking as well, which I know will be coming, coming up, that from our finance committee will be finding out the presentation of the, you know, the capital improvement projects that we have been executing and at the high school, um, to look at the actual information.
TJ, I'm going to defer to you as treasurer and finance chair. I know you've started to do some work in this area on, I don't know, you've got something stated that's going to be a financial statement as well. Would it be an agenda item for that?
Potentially could be.
Overwhelming.
Overwhelming.
Any other announce, any other items for future consideration? Two good ones here. Thank you. Motion to adjourn. Wait, any other board member announcements?
Homecoming.
Homecoming? This weekend?
Homecoming? When is homecoming?
Saturday. Football game is Friday. Homecoming Saturday.
Is there a parade again this year?
Mm-hmm.
Friday afternoon?
Mm-hmm.
Hopefully, it'll be nice weather?
It is. Seven to seven in sunny.
So they say.
I already cleaned up my convertible for the freshman class. So, it's all set.
And what I do like about that condition is it involves the elementary through the middle school to high school by starting a parade at those corners of the town.
No candy throwing.
Yeah. But now, the parade, you're absolutely right. It is so much fun. If you've never had the opportunity to take in the parade, take the opportunity to ride in the parade, get up there, or do something, and it's just amazing to see all of the kids come out and line the streets for that day, and they wave, and they just have so much fun. It's really something special.
And the Pepperellia.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good analogy. Yes. Thank you for that announcement. Any other announcements?
We have our WASD regional meeting coming up on October 22. Typically, this board has not had very good attendance at that meeting, so I just want to say Kathy's making reservations for...
Where is that at?
For the Two Springs Hotels.
Two Springs? Yeah.
It's October 22?
Is that all day?
Evening.
Is that all day?
Dinner.
If not, then I have a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Second.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah. Five minutes ago.